Good evening, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our West Covina City Council meeting. Today is July 18, 2023. It is 7:06. I am Rosario Diaz, your Centennial Mayor, and this meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor John Lee from Karas Church, and Councilwoman Lati Lopez-Viado will lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Sovereign God, we gather here today as representative of our community. You entrusted us with the responsibility of shaping the future of our city. We invite your presence and seek your blessings. Grant us the clarity to discern the needs of our fellow citizens and the wisdom to make decisions that promote justice, equality, and progress. May our hearts be open to the diverse perspectives and voices within our community, and may we embrace empathy and understanding in the process. Guide our minds as we navigate complex challenges and consider various possibilities. Help us approach our task with integrity, transparency, and compassion. We humbly ask for your guidance in fostering collaboration and cooperation so that we may work together harmoniously for the betterment of our city. Grant us the strength to find common ground to build a future that benefits all. Finally, we thank you for the privilege to serve our fellow citizens and for the trust that they have placed in us. May your wisdom, grace, guide us. In the name of the Most High, amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Here.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Present.
Mayor Diaz?
Here.
City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to presentations. I'd like to invite our Community Services Commissioners and staff to the front. This proclamation recognizes the importance of equitable access to local parks, recreation trails, open space, and facilities for the positive development of all Californians and their communities. We therefore declare the month of July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Testing, testing. This is a very special day, or month, I should say, and I'm very proud and happy that we have all our commissioners and our community leaders here to help us out in celebrating Community Service Day. And with that, I'd like to present a proclamation. So this proclamation recognizes the importance of what I just mentioned, and I'm not going to repeat myself. So now therefore, I, Rosario Diaz, Mayor of the City of West Covina, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023, Parks Make Life Better, July 18, 2023. So, does anybody want to speak?
Thank you so much, Mayor. What I want to do real quick is, first of all, I want to recognize the members of our commission who are here with us this evening. So if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the front so that the public can see our faces. We really use our community and Senior Services Commission as a body to not only bounce ideas off of, but to really lend that sense of legitimacy to our programs because they really are the representative of the people. They are appointed positions, so I'm doing a plug for our City Council members. They're appointed positions, so we do have some vacancies. And it's a great opportunity, really, for our residents to give back to the community. If, you know, this is something that you're interested in, in serving in this capacity, it's very rewarding, wouldn't you agree? All right, so I'm going to introduce our members with us. We have our Chair, Cara Molner. Gail Mason, our Vice Chair. And Commissioner Sherri Fisher. And then one more, one more, well, a couple more acknowledgements. And then right behind our commissioners and our mayor, we also have our fabulous Community Services Team. And what I would request from all of you is to please give them a round of applause. It is my absolute pleasure and my privilege to be able to bring them forward to you tonight. You guys don't always have the opportunity to see all of them. Maybe you recognize some of their faces depending on which community center you frequent. But what I want to do is I want to have a few of our, excuse me, I would like our full-time staff members to step forward, and I want them to introduce their part-time staff members that are here. So I'm going to first look at our fearless leader, our Recreation Services Supervisor, Ms. Vanessa Banez. Go ahead and introduce your staff.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's our pleasure to serve the community. Parks truly make life better. So we're out in the community day in and day out, and these are the faces that are out there with the community, serving you guys. So I would like to introduce my part-time staff that I work with directly at the senior center. So I do have Christina Funch here, she's our Assistant Cook. So you'll see her cooking up some delicious meals in the kitchen here. And then we have Laura, she's our Site Coordinator over at the senior center as well. So she helps us. And I do have two full-time staff members as well. We have our Head Cook, Holly Smith, so you'll see him leading in the kitchen, cooking up some delicious seniors meals. And then we have Joseph Gonzalez, who is our Office Assistant too, who helps us with a variety of things at the senior center. So, Siva is not here today. And then I do have my full-time Community Services Coordinator, Leslie Godinez. And then I'll hand it over to Steve.
Thank you, Vanessa. Good afternoon, everybody. First and foremost, my name's Steve Saragoza. I'm Community Services Coordinator for the City of West Covina over at the Cameron Community Center in the West Covina Sportsplex. It's an honor to stand here before you guys, members of the public, council, city leaders. I'd like to briefly introduce some of my staff that I have here in attendance. I'll start with Clarissa Romero, she's a Site Coordinator at the Cameron Community Center. Followed by her, I also have Cameron Moreno, who is also a Site Coordinator at the Cameron Community Center. I have Jaden Ortiz, Rec Leader at the Cameron Community Center and Sportsplex as well. Gary Villalobos, Rec Leader at the Cameron Community Center and the West Covina Sportsplex. Howa Costa, Rec Leader at the Cameron Community Center and Sportsplex. I think I got everybody on my end, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Lesi Bravo.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, my name's Lesi Bravo, and I am the Community Services Coordinator at Shadow Oak. And I have three staff members here with me today, all Recreation Leader staff. The first one is Emilio Yoah. Also here, we have Marianne Santa Cruz. And last but not least, representing Shadow Oak, I have Francisco Villanueva, which is also our Rec Leader.
Hello, everybody. My name is Miguel Quijada. I am at the Palm View Community Center, also known as Airplane Park. My team couldn't make it today, but I would love to shout them out because without them, you know, I couldn't keep that center running. So I have Deontay Nelly, Ashley Whitaker, and Janessa Munoz, I couldn't make it today.
Thank you so much. What I would like to do is just to thank all of you. You know, from the bottom of my heart, the commissioners, for your guidance, your leadership, your expertise, to my staff, you guys are fabulous. Every day, you put yourselves into what you do. You don't just show up to work. You come and you engage and you give us your time and your talent. And we are so grateful. We're so grateful to all of you for doing that. We're also grateful for our Mayor, Mayor Rosario Diaz, as well as our City Council members, because without them, and without them setting the policies, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So thank you for your trust, for your guidance, and for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor? Mayor Diaz? Mayor Diaz, can I say something quickly?
I'd just say something, too.
Yeah. Me, too. You know, it's my pleasure, my honor, to work with you guys. And, okay, bottom of my heart, okay, and summer concert, it's been eight years already, and nothing but see you smiling faces when I step in, okay? And dancing with all the staff and all the residents, and it's nothing but enjoyment, and all the community event, okay? And you are the face of the city, okay? People go to the park, people go to the facility, people go to the senior center. And I remember Vanessa can name everybody, come to pick out the few. Hey, Charles, hey, sweetie, how you doing? This and that, I was impressed, I say, oh my God, you know everybody. So this is a meaning, you got to put your heart into it. I just wanted to say thank you, thank you so much. We have all this good team, and stay with us. The city will continue to improve and take care of you, and we want you to be here to grow with us. But thank you again, really appreciate.
Councilman Contos, did you want to say something?
Well, I'd like to say, well, you probably know I'm in the field of recreation. City of L.A., it's Recreation and Parks. County, it's Parks and Recreation. But within Recreation, within that word is recreate, and that's what you do, that you deliver to our community. You fulfill this from our youngest youth to our oldest senior, and you provide services all around, and I just want to say thank you. I know everything that you produce out there, it's quality and that you're, you know, happy faces and everything, so you make the community feel warm at heart. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that. Also, for those who don't know, we do have professional chefs here. So raise your hand. I know, what school again? It was a...
Court on Blue, both of us.
A court of, yeah, the high quality. So our seniors, they did do our dinner, for the 100th Anniversary Dinner, so that if you enjoyed the meal, it was produced from our own staff. So our seniors are very, very lucky to have you for their senior lunch program. But I just want to say thank you so much for everything that you've done, and we greatly appreciate it, and I know the community values that, too. Thank you.
Councilman Contos?
Commissioners, I just really got to stop for a moment to commend you, for all of you, for your leadership. I mean, you bring such heart and soul to senior and community services, and you do it so passionately, you do it so consistently. And then combined with our awesome staff, which I feel are the best anywhere, you're all incredible, all of you. We've had the pleasure and honor and privilege of interacting with our incredible staff. And the thing is, all of you, the commissioners, the staff, everyone, you all have such heart, every single one of you. There's never a time when you don't rise to the call of duty, and you give such heart, soul, and energy, and you love West Covina, and West Covina loves you back. It's really important that our community and those who see this on video, that they see how close we are. And the reason why we have such a strong community and why we have such strong support for seniors is because of all of you. You do this every day, and it makes a real difference in the lives of our fellow residents across this community, regardless of background, status, age, everything. And that's rare to have this kind of a family atmosphere in a city of our size. And you are all to be commended for your incredible ongoing leadership. I literally love you guys, literally, and thank you for being you, and thank you for all that you do for all of us. You're just magnificent.
Councilman Tabatabai? I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I just like to say, reiterate what my colleagues have said. First, to the commissioners, thank you for, you know, stepping up for the community, you know, to be a commissioner, to give your time. But you give your time because you want what's best for the City of West Covina. And we really appreciate it, the work that you do, the discussions that you have to make us a better city. And then to staff, you are also phenomenal. Whenever there's an event, you are the first ones that I seek out because you bring so much beautiful energy. You always ask for my son, and I know you do that for everybody because you do really just embrace every person here in West Covina. I know at the ESPN event, I went up there, and it was already past time for the Splash Day to be done, but there were kids who still wanted to play. And so you stayed up there, you kept it open for them. It was hot, but all of you had the biggest smiles and the greatest amount of energy, and I was up there for like 15 minutes, and I was done. But all of you were just still out there with all the love. And again, to Assistant Manager Lerma for really leading this entire team up here. This creativity in every event, the professionalism in every event, but just the joy all of you bring. It is really appreciated by all of us, by all the residents. I would dare to say you are the most popular part of City Hall, but you deserve it. You deserve it because you really do bring the community together. So thank you.
Well, I have to say that they really do deserve it. These people here, our commissioners and our staff here, never a frown on their face. They're always smiling. You come up to them, they'll help you with anything, anything that needs to be done, they're there. And I really, I have to say, thank you so much. You guys are the greatest. They're the first ones to get at an event, and they're the last ones to leave. And it's just, they work so hard, and I feel bad, I want to hang out with you guys and help you. I feel, but you know what? Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and it wouldn't be this way, our city wouldn't be as good as it is if it wasn't for you guys. So thank you, thank you so much. Good job, good job, good job. Good job. Okay, now we're going to move on to oral communications. If you would like to address the council, please fill out your yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak.
Through the chair, Mayor, can I just say, this is Eric, he's part of our staff. And so if you could just line up, starting behind him, and then go ahead and proceed to the podium when I call your name. Thank you. Mayor, we have...
Nine speakers?
We have nine speakers cards, Mayor. Our first speaker is Aaron Rodriguez, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by John Shoemaker. If you could start lining up. Aaron Rodriguez, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by John Shoemaker.
Hello, all of you. My name is Aaron. Please allow me extra time to speak. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilor members, Paulina, Waksan, and my Uncle Eric, thank you for this opportunity to share tonight. Thank you to all Parks and Rec Station staff. I personally want to thank Cameron from Cameron Park, Steve, and staff Miguel, and the staff of Palm View Park, of your support, kindness, and best interest, not only me, but also those of special needs. Disabled community, I've been able to participate in art, sumpa, karate, and college classes, parks, and recertative regation. You are awesome. A big thank you to my family and friends to who are here tonight to support me. Parks and Rec Station play in a pointed world in the life of all people, including childrens and adults with special needs and all abilities. Rec station promote physical, social, and emotional well-being that leads to a healthy, balanced lifestyle. These activities help to develop development of social skills and personal relationships and provide enjoyment to daily life. Confidence, confidence, cor- creativity, and special instinct. Social and recreational service creates opportunities for consumers like my college, Mount SAC, to have life experience and promote community lifestyle. May I ask my professor's gap for this moment? I have been a college student at Mount SAC Impact Program for four years. It's an amazing program. My professor care about their students, and I'm grateful for them. Thank you, West Covina, for the partnership with my college to have satellite classes in our city. Thank you. West Covina, you are now creating, West Covina, you are now creating community space where people with special needs and all ability enjoy activities with others is a first step in helping them become fully integrated members of our community. I can't wait to, I can't wait to see what else you bring to our city. I hope it's adaptive sports, swimming, and Special Olympics. Thank you.
Good job.
Matthew Smith, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson. Matthew Smith?
Good evening, City Council. Since you have recognized Parks and Rec this evening, I'll start with softball. The one, the person that we directly work with is Steve. He does a great job over at the Sportsplex. Of course, the Director of Maintenance does also, keeping six fields going. But Steve is our main contact, Steve is there. He'll come to our softball board meetings, give field updates. We have him as a guest. He will return texts, he lets us know what's going on. We've never gotten there, and the fields not have been set up, extremely dependable. So we definitely appreciate the relationship we have with Steve, and of course Vanessa overseeing the program as well. So thank you for honoring them tonight. They are a great reflection on you and the rest of the city. ESPN event was great. It was a lot of fun being up there. It was probably the first event that the softball organization has participated in. The city was great, gave us some tables and booths, we got some giveaways, and met people, and we definitely want to support the city and their function. So when the Fourth of July comes around or other events, we do plan on being there in a booth and supporting in numbers what the city's trying to do for the community. A suggestion from the board was, of course, we sat in our booth and looked at the empty field for a couple hours. The board would like next year to do All-Star Exhibition Senior Softball Game before the All-Star Softball Game, if that's possible. So there's a lot of time to think about that, but it's something that we'd be interested in doing, either sometime in the morning, afternoon, whenever. But it'd be fun for the seniors to get out there and play a little softball before the ESPN All-Stars do. Regarding Bun Street, the Fourth of July event was great. We went up there to take a look at it. Typically, at Bun Street, all the streets, we give the day off on Fourth of July. I took pictures, lines were 20 people in front of the vendors. I took pictures, I was getting automatic feedback from the managers, who were telling me we're there next year, we're there next year, we're there next year. So it was nice to have them volunteering to participate in the Fourth of July concert and fireworks show voluntarily because it's something, I don't think we want to make our employees work that day, but as soon as they saw what was going on up there in pictures, they want to be there next year. So we'll look forward to participating in that next year as well. Menu for tomorrow night for the concert from the streets. We will be having bacon-wrapped hot dogs, nacho bar, tamales, and fruit cups. So we look forward to participating at the Wednesday night concert. As there's two left, we're excited about finishing up the season and doing food services for you guys. That's all I have. Once again, thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Sue Aguino.
You know, on the Fourth of July, Councilmember Tabatabai said that I don't have the best reputation in the world when it comes to the truth. Of course, he doesn't point anything out. Then he goes on to point out that the Shoemaker family doesn't have a good reputation when it comes to the truth. when it comes to the truth. I got a question. What has Jennifer ever said or done that wasn't truthful? If you're looking at me, who's that? It's my oldest daughter who lives in Mississippi. She hasn't been to California in 20 years. She doesn't even know who the hell you are. My grandkids are there too. They haven't been to California. So what, why are you blasting them? Jessica served this community for 15 years honorably. What has she said that was wrong? Yeah, my grandkids here in California, John, Tyler, Victoria, and Elizabeth, who are 18, 16, 15, and 10. What have they said that is not truthful? You know, so I decided I was going to go back and think about it. When you first ran for City Council, I made the comment that I thought you would be the best candidate coming out of District One. Are you telling me that was a lie? When people said, you know, what was your position on how you would handle finances? I said, talking to him, he's going to be very strict with finances and not let the city get carried away. Was that untruthful? When the city, when the people, your colleagues, wanted to take you out of the rotation, I said, you didn't do anything that deserved to be removed from the rotation. Was that a lie? So I'm just wondering. And as I was thinking about this, I was trying to figure out why you made that attack. Well, I'm hoping you're going to do something tonight because in your email, in your text, you specifically stated that you received from the city manager, the acting city manager and the fire chief, that the fire was at Goldster Park and that if they are lying, you're going to take action. What action are you going to take? Like you've been doing for the last three years? Basically, nothing? All talk? You know, I was wondering why you would attack my family? When, you know, the, when Mount Fazubius has, you know, shot off his mouth attacking your family, your heritage, your job? I stood up here and said, that's inappropriate. That's not correct. That should not be done. Is that a lie? So you threw the sound. I'm trying to figure out, why would you do that? Then it dawned on me, you don't like me. So here was an opportunity that I said a fire was not where you were told it was and you did exactly what Mayor Diaz and Councilmember Wu did. They jumped on the opportunity to try to make somebody look bad instead of finding out. Asking one simple question, hey, John, why are you saying it's there when I'm being told this, everything, everything else? Well, real simple. Where people are standing, the mayor is the sportsplex. Goldster Park is where Glenn Kennedy is sitting. The fire is where our city attorney is sitting. Oh, I guess I'm being given bad information. But instead, you acted like Mayor Diaz and Councilmember Wu. And then to add insult to injury, you started acting like Bill Elliott by attacking my family, who's never done or said anything to you. You know, but that probably explains why you've never made any comments about some of their stunts and antics and things that they've done, especially Bill Elliott, the way he's attacked race and everything else. Because I'm sitting there thinking about it, goes, you know, you've learned from them. You've taken over their, what they do, exactly the same thing, which is highly disappointing. But I guess I'll just start calling you Bill Jr. from now on. Thank you.
Bill Robinson, followed by Sue Agino, followed by Jeff Agino. Bill Robinson?
So the COVID vaccines clot shot are the more, most dangerous vaccines in history. The CDC wants you to believe that there are just a few cases of myocarditis. Steve Kirsch's message today, and I'll quote, shows by the official narrative, they're lying to you big time. In an empire of lies, truth telling is treason. There are hundreds of very serious adverse events that simply aren't being told to you about and hope, and they hope you will never figure it out. Number one is myocarditis. The only serious adverse event the CDC acknowledges for the COVID vaccines is myocarditis. Informed consent is absent. We've got enormous fraud, criminal denial going on here. And myocarditis, I mentioned, the long list continues. Pulmonary embolism, miscarriage, atrial fibrillation, erectile dysfunction, cardiac arrest, stroke, intracranial hemorrhage, aortic aneurysm, Guillain-Barre syndrome, Bell's Palsy, Ramsey-Hunt syndrome. Justin Bieber has this. Stiff Person Syndrome. Celine Dion has got it. Kreutzfeldt-Jakob disease, heavy menstrual bleeding. There's dozens of ways to mess up females' cyclic patterns. Let's skip the details, but this is essentially a war on women. Metal poisoning. This is a partial list. Long term, I could go on for hundreds of adverse events, all unacknowledged. Bring this list to your family doc and you can figure it out together. See if the docs have the courage to risk their licensure introducing truth into the official narrative. Safe and effective. Give me a break. I'm not even an M.D. You guys know me, I'm the village idiot. But I, but I know the poison death, genocide, sterilization, infertility shot is not good for your health and well-being. Life insurance companies know this too. You can see their actuarial tables. Check the government VAERS database for verification. In 1986, Congress passed a law which attempted to remove corporate liability with a 75% per clot shot surcharge added to the atrocity. If you call it a vaccine, but if, but if you call it a DOD-sponsored bioweapon, full liability remains. See Sasha Latopova and Catherine Watt Substacks for research following, follow up on this matter. The insane plans of the World Economic Forum was recently described by a website called StopWorldControl.com. The World Economic Forum is driving, is the driving force of a radical transformation in our world. They say the metaphor of every aspect of human existence is needed to save the planet. Give me a break. The WHO has a program called One Health to compete with West Covina's emergent department of, you know, health department. So we got One Health at the top and West Covina all fighting for a health department for, paid for by the taxpayers. Give me a break. But be aware that this level of insanity and these officially published plans is beyond what a normal human being can comprehend. But, but this is, we're looking at real evil here. So the plans for the future, I want to go through this list real quick, is vaccine passports, digital ID, a closed Chinese-style social credit system. You get brownie points if you do what you're told by the government. But if not, I have special needs too. I need 15 more seconds to go through.
Sue Agino, followed by Jeff Agino.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Robinson, thank you. You can continue. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson. Next meeting. How about add it to the next meeting? Our next meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Sue. Go ahead, Sue Agino.
Good evening. It's been said at prior meetings when, I'm going to speak about social media and things that come up in social media, that Mayor Diaz does not know what's going on with what her husband says in the community to other residents and staff and I will say other community leaders. But I'm about to tell you. I'm about to make it very clear. I've been attacked by her husband for years. This after this last fireworks show because I opposed it and I didn't think that it should be up at Big League Dreams for safety reasons. He took that on his own personal agenda to go after me. William Elliott, author. Sue Oldemagino, big words for a wrinkled old hag who desperately craves attention. Your lies are old, but you tell them well. Tell some more lies about to that pathetic little troll of a husband of yours since he is so easily led by you and your only masculine one in a relationship. In spite of you, we all enjoyed the spectacular fireworks show and that your little cult tried but failed to stop. It was an epic show, show and record crowd tonight. The fabulous West Covina Fire Department was there. Sorry to hear that your bad luck, sorry to hear that your bad trick didn't work. As usual, not one of your haters were there to spoil the fun. You can't even show your leather face anywhere to criticize and complain. Try, time to call another pointless meeting again, don't you think? Go away, you have no power here. Go away, you have no power here. Great, that's amazing. I'm a resident and I have no power. You literally are not missed by anyone anymore. You couldn't get elected to be dog catcher and your jealousy is not very becoming of you. William Elliott, author. Sue Agino, you, you, you will have to say, you certainly, I have never kicked you off any page and continued to talk trash on a regular basis. Unlike you, you kicked me off of your West Covina neighborhood page because you are under-equipped to, for the war of wits. And FYI, I have a long memory and I'm still not over the tit-for-tat you told your husband about me. You are a racist, you are a liar, and you are a bully. You don't respect me and I don't have to respect you. Mayor Diaz, this is your husband. He is a representative of you. You are a family. We are a family. We have got enough going on in this city that we don't need your husband going around and saying things about residents. And I'm not the only one. He attacks women on a regular basis and runs from men, but he'll attack the women. He goes, he went after Colleen Rosati horribly. He attacks women about their size, their age, their skin, everything, calling me racist from a man who stands up here and calls everybody cockroaches. Boy, that's just genuine. And just for an FYI, I did not call the news. Mr. Wu, Bill Elliott seems to think he is a representative of your voice and he's speaking for you on social media saying that I attacked, that I called the news to kill your Fourth of July celebration because I'm a racist, because I don't like Chinese people and that's why you fired me. All of us know you didn't fire me because I was racist. I said a statement to his Chinese friends that were attacking the United States of America and our president. I said, my quote, and this is for record, if you don't like the United States, you know how to get on a plane. I never said a word about race, never said anything. I was fired because I wouldn't apologize to your friends. Let's be truthful about that. So now I've, now I've been given the badge of racist because of that. I will tell you, Mr. Bill Elliott, that's filming me right now, that's amazing. Mr. Bill Elliott, you are anything but a gentleman, first or otherwise. And I would appreciate it if you would reel your husband in because it's really unbecoming. Thank you.
Jeff Agino, George Wen, and Leilani.
Hello. So now that you heard from my wife, I guess you can hear the rest of it. So William Elliott, author. This isn't about fireworks or the hillside being in danger or anything remotely related to it. This is about Sue hating on the city council and especially council, well, I don't know why. Anybody would think that, that's just fucking stupid. Excuse me for my language because I'm, you know, pretty upset right now. But rather deep-seated oppositional defiance and hatred of our elected city officials. Well, again, I don't think she's ever said anything about any of these people or city officials. Not only that, but when you're elected to this position, you have to take it because everybody is sitting here in this community and they're looking to their city council to take care and represent them. And if you don't like it, then you just took the wrong seat. I've heard it from past residents, I mean, council members. They've all said the same thing. They've gotten chewed out and looked at and sneered and called names and gotten into arguments with people for, for not having a heritage, whatever bullshit it is. It's ridiculous. City officials, no matter what they decide, the vast core majority of her little hater cult are all white Republicans, and I thought he was Republican, who just all happened to hate Tony Wu and have a strong desire to control him. The racial comment cannot be denied. Sue sued the city and lost. No, she didn't. She tried to put her stealth back in, you know, a situation where somebody was calling her out and making my house a target. That's what it was about. She just is a hater and a liar and a racist. And that's why she was removed from as a city council commissioner. And you know what? That's another one. That just makes no sense. Because if I was there and I heard the conversation and if Tony Wu didn't say, please, 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 please apologize. These people are dishing me money. Just apologize. Just apologize, please. Why would she apologize? For somebody sitting there bashing the state of America and bashing the president? Why would anybody apologize for that? I mean, I can understand, you got your opinion, that's fine. But you know what? So does she. And her opinion just was just as important as anybody else's at that point. You know, it doesn't make a difference. I don't know how anybody could sit there and say these things, especially you, Mr. Tabatai. From what I understand, you walked around and told everybody when my wife was running to become the treasurer that she was a racist. Why would you do something like that? You don't even know her. You don't even know me. You don't even know how the fuck I live. And yet you go around and I-
George Wen, followed by Leilani, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Hi, West Covina City Council. Mayor, it's an honor to see you guys here today. Thank you for allowing me to speak. City staff and the, you know, community commissioners here.
Order. Hey, you guys. That's enough. That's enough.
I hope my time can get paused.
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you. And it's also good to see the community service commissioners. Good to see you guys here today. I'm here to speak, sorry about that. I'm here to speak because Janice, the victim of the house fire, she wanted me to say thank you to all of you guys who donated to her GoFundMe, Letty Lopez and Brian Tabatabai. And she wanted to thank Ali Cantos for coming to her fundraiser. We were able to raise $4,500 for her. Also, she's kind of surviving off of the fundraisers right now. She's on a fixed income of $680 a month. And she is in desperate need of a place, you know, living by herself for 40 years. It was, you know, she has her habits, she has her ways, she doesn't want to change. I can't control that, nobody can control that. But, you know, hopefully there is some kind of assistance that can help her find a place. And she is going to end up selling her house, but of course, that's going to take time. So hopefully, you know, you guys can give her a call. She told me it's okay to give her phone number. I have it right here. It's area code 626.
I don't think you want to put it out in public for everybody now. We give it to our city clerk.
Thank you, thank you. That's right, that's right, I forgot about that.
But if you, but if you are here for the public, if the public would like to help, contact George, he does have a Facebook or, if you want to give your phone number out to everybody, that's a different story.
Your number if you want to.
Yes, yes. Those of you who don't know me, I'm the admin for West Covina Buzz. You can reach out to me. I'll be happy to give out her phone number. And so thank you for that. So funny. Also, the last time I was here, I had a couple of requests and Brian, David Carmini was on, you know, he since resides since then, but I inquired about adding lights on Grand and I just wanted to get an update on that, find out if that's still going to be able to happen. Also, in our Parks Make Life Better, the, to rent out the cabanas for, you know, they're $250 for a cabana. All the other cities are, you know, some of them are free, some of them are just $10 an hour or whatever, but not $250 or 150. So it would be great. I know a lot of West Covina residents that go to neighboring cities who rent out their cabanas because it's too expensive and it's non-refundable fee. But that's all I'm here for today. Thank you so much. One more thing, I forgot. Brian Tabatabai, I know you're trying to get some gay pride events in here in West Covina and I really appreciate it. As for being an LGBTQ person with a family and a son, we would really appreciate bringing something like that in our city. Thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I can get that number for you if you want. George, George, I can get that phone number for you.
Phone number.
Just give me one moment. Leilani, followed by Glenn Kennedy. Leilani.
Hi, this is my first time, so I'm kind of nervous. I'd like, good evening, council members. I'm a proud transgender. I live in West Covina and it would be nice to have a gay pride parade since Hollywood have it, Long Beach have it, and it would be nice to have a trans, gay pride parade. And also I wanted to address a concern about the West Covina Police Department. There was back in 2003, three years ago, five years ago. I called the police department in West Covina, they came over and then they didn't know I was a transgender, okay? And there was an issue. And they, I told them that I was a transgender and they told me that you're still a man. And there was a lot of harassment and they kept on saying, you were born a man, you're not a woman. And I addressed that to them, that I was a transgender. I have never been misgendered in my entire life, but having that type of harassment from the West Covina Police Department, that was kind of, I was kind of shocked for them to even call me in front of my family and in front of my brother that. They said that I was born a man, that you're not a woman, and I told them that I was a transgender. They didn't know that I was a transgender until I told them. And I just want to address that. And I don't want any type of retaliation from the police department or anything. So I live a very private life. I live a very straight lifestyle. Nobody knows about me, nobody knows about I'm a transgender. I have never been misgendered by anybody or any type of stores or anything like that. So I just wanted to address that to you guys. And that should never happen in West Covina, that this type of behavior from the West Covina Police Department should never happen. And they need to be educated about there is transgender, like myself, that do exist in West Covina and we need to be protected. Thank you.
Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, nice to see everybody. First of all, nice job with the commissioners. I served, gee, what about 14 years on community service and served with Letty, long time, yeah. And I was the most controversial commissioner the city has ever had. That's a fact, let's get things straight. And you, you own Bun Street, right? That place is awesome. So, oh, by the way, you need an extra ballplayer, I have a few world championships under my belt, bro. Okay? Well, anyway, I'm here representing the Historical Society and save the date, August 19th, Saturday, Historical Hurst Ranch. Now, tickets are only 40 bucks. Well, you get a prime rib dinner, so. You get tickets at Hurst Ranch or I'm going to give you a phone number to call the Historical Society. Hold on here. I can give out the phone number, right? Okay.
Yeah, this number is public for-
It's 626-664-3050. That's 626-664-3050. Okay? Thank you, it was nice seeing everybody. You guys have a beautiful evening, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards. JD.
Pop, pop. We're starting the time.
Tonight, I heard the F-bomb. I just saw Mr. Kennedy turn around and dialogue with this gentleman. At the last meeting before you guys went on your vacation, a lady came up here asking for CBG, CBD money. She turned around and just plastered Herman for about a minute. Mayor, you didn't ask her to turn around and address the council. You didn't ask tonight Kennedy to turn around and address the council. I hope that you're taking note, Pro-Town, because that's not the way a mayor should be treating the public. You should treat everybody fairly and you haven't done that. You, of all people, sat here and said how you were treated unfairly. And I see time and time again, and I was a victim of this from prior councils. So that's why it kind of really bothers me. I understand the emotion Sue and her husband come here with, but you have a responsibility to treat everyone fairly and impartially and you haven't demonstrated that. You have shown yourself to be very, very partial with certain individuals, Herman and his friend. If they didn't have the right to come up here and use the F-bomb, then neither did Sue's husband. If he didn't have the right to come up here and turn around and address the audience, then neither does Kennedy. You need to be fair right down the line. And you did that before with Steve Bennett. When you threw someone out of this council and it was the exact same thing, I don't understand why you make this such a personal thing instead of treating it as what you were voted into office to do, then that is to direct the city business and treat everyone fairly. You're calling for the gay community to have their rights. Don't forget that there are others that may not be gay, but may have personal feelings one way or the other, that if they're within their right, you need to defend that right as well. So yes, I'm, I too am a little bit hot because I've seen it time and time again. And I've seen it and I've brought it to your attention before, Mayor, and it seems to just kind of go past you. Appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, Assistant, I mean, Acting City Manager, can you address the-
Of course. I would like to thank Erin, our first speaker. It's really nice when we have members of the community come up and thank our staff and I think it was quite appropriate that it was on the day that we're recognizing our Parks and Rec staff. And so wanted to thank him for coming up. I know public speaking is not everyone's cup of tea and it takes courage to come up here, so greatly appreciated him coming and doing that. Matthew, we're glad that you're now considering participating in our 4th of July event, but I wanted to let you know we are going to have events between now and next year, so we hope that you come and enjoy and participate in other events, the concerts, but there's other events. We'll make sure we keep you appraised of any upcoming city event that you can participate in. And that goes to all of our businesses in the community. We're always very happy to promote, you know, the businesses in our community and have them be a partner with us in our events throughout the year. So if any business is interested in participating in any event, we have our events on our website and then there's partner sponsorships opportunities as well. So we encourage everyone to go on our website and look for those opportunities to partner with us. George, I would like to follow up. I think you had requested lights on Grand with Dave Carmini. I believe he reached out to SCE and they're looking at putting lights there. I think part of it's county and part of it's West Covina, so we're working on that and I'll follow up. And then Lillian, I did want to let you know that our police department does have training for that kind of behavior or to prevent that kind of behavior and we do not condone it. So that's not something that we accept in our police department. And then I think that was it for me. Oh, Glenn, you had the event on August 19th, Historical Society. If you can forward us that information, we'd greatly appreciate it. And I think that was it for me.
Thank you. Now, if we can have the, what is it, the Acting City Manager's report? City Manager's report?
So as mentioned a couple of times now, we've recognizing Parks and Rec Month and we kicked it off with our 4th of July event. It was a very successful event. We had almost an estimated 5,000 individuals that helped celebrate 4th of July with our staff. So I wanted to thank our staff for working on a holiday, for coming in and making it such a great event, and also to our community that came and celebrated with us. And I think we had all five council members, so it was really nice. We had the Heroes Parade. And I think I'll let this video, you know, speak to how great of an event it was. Roxanne? So, I don't know if he's here, Fausto is the one that put the video together today, so thank you, Fausto. The next thing is Cold Kids of Summer, so we're continuing to have those fun events for our community members. This next one is going to be at, scheduled at Palm View this Friday, July 21st, and it's from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. and includes water slides, water games, arts and raffles, informational booth vendors, popsicles and a DJ. So it's fun activity for the family on a hot day since I think we're going to be having a bit of some hot weather this week. Also mentioned briefly earlier is the ESPN LA All-Star event that we had at the Sportsplex. So we partnered with them for the second annual ESPN LA All-Star Friday night at the Sportsplex and it was from 10 a.m. to 9:30. And I think our mayor did the first pitch of the softball game for the All-Star softball game. So we're continuing, it was a great event and we're looking forward to having it at the Sportsplex again next year. As I mentioned, we are going to have a bit of hot weather, so we do have cooling centers. And they're at Cameron Park Community Center, Cortez Community Center, Palm View and Shadow Oaks. The only one that is available on Saturdays is the Cameron Park Community Center. And so it's hours at the, those facilities are open. And so that information will be able, will be available on the website as well. The city had its first Pickleball tournament on Saturday, July 8th with eight teams participating. So just a reminder that Pickleball is held every Monday, Wednesday, Friday at Cameron Community Center and Fridays from 12:30 to 1:30 at Cortez Community and Senior Center. So we hope to see you there. We are canceling August 1st, the city council meeting, but we can still see you. We are going to be kicking off National Night Out at the Plaza West Covina at 4:30. After that, the council and staff will be visiting various neighborhood events throughout the night. Those, I think, events have been worked with the, or finalized with the police department, but if you are a community, neighborhood group and would like to host one next year, please work with our police department. It's on their website, westcavina, or, sorry, www.wcpd.org/neighborhoodwatch and you can get your event included in the rotation for next year's National Night Out. Next is the Centennial Mayor will be hosting the first annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It is scheduled for Thursday, August 31st from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 at the Taylor House located at Heritage Park. The prayer breakfast will focus on community fellowship and will include all faith-based communities in West Covina to join the conversation. So we invite everyone to go and I think it's a $25 donation for the event. So we hope to see you there. I'm also thrilled to announce that we have been awarded a 2.6 million award for West Covina Safe Routes to Schools and Pedestrian Safety Project. So this is a grant, the money's that does not require matching funds from the city and it's going to go towards making improvements at 21 locations throughout the city that focuses on pedestrian safety near schools, city parks, and when there's a high percentage of pedestrian activity. Some of those upgrades include signalized intersections with audible pedestrian countdown signals, installation of new highly vis- signals, installation of new highly visible crosswalk striping, and flashing stop signs among some of those improvements. So, once we have confirmed dates of when this project will start, we'll provide an update. Very excited to be awarded that grant money, $2.6 million. The next one is, as some residents might have noticed, if you live in the area, we've started our annual Street Rehabilitation Project 2223. This year's project includes slurry seal, as well as grinding and overlay resurfacing of our streets. And you can see the area above. It's really the western portion of the city, south of the 10 freeway. And it started in June. It's anticipated to be completed next month. So we appreciate our residents' patience during construction, and as I mentioned, it is anticipated to be completed next month. Also, as a heads up, next month, we are going to be doing some improvements, oh, please skip. This project, I know has been, we've gotten a lot of calls about it. So the Citrus Right Turn Lane is going to be changed to a Citrus Through and Right Turn. And that's going to start tomorrow. And so we, we're very excited to announce it's going to, those improvements are going to start tomorrow. The overall project, which includes 20 improvements to 20 different locations, will be completed by September of this year. So getting that started. Also, the next slide is we're going to be doing improvements to the city parking lot. And this is going to start on August 3rd and 4th in that red area, and then the 10th and 11th on, or the blue area, the 10th and 11th. So there will always be access to the city hall. It's just a matter of which entry point you can come into city hall. So that we've posted it on our social media, and we'll provide, you know, signs if people are trying to access city hall during those days, those best days to come. But those are days that we don't have meetings or anything like that, so we were trying to schedule it when it's most convenient for, or on days we don't have meetings. Lastly, we've had calls and complaints about residents, or from residents, about the conditions of streets and sidewalks left over from improvements left by Frontier. So it's kind of small. Maybe we can zoom in, Roxanne, sorry. But the city, the city is working with Frontier to, do you have the pointer? Or if you can go along.
Which direction would you like to go?
There you go. If you could see these stripes right here, so that's what was left from the improvements. And so we're working with Frontier to get those streets repaired to a condition and standard that we like, or in the city, and doesn't leave it as a patchwork in our community. So that was just my last update. Thank you.
Counselor Mawu?
Yeah, thank you so much, the update about the Frontier. Frontier, okay, doing the underground with their cable, so-called fiber cable, trying to improve their internets to be faster, but, okay, sound good, but the problem is the damage entire south side, Shadow Oak area, okay, including south of BKK, all this area with underground, and they're patching, and now they let the damage sidewalk. So I think we've been requesting them to fix it. So I know only one street, but how many streets? They damaged like numerous streets, so what will be, I know it was difficult to deal with them, but they need to fix the thing they, they make damage, okay? We, we've been requested by all the residents, they have a beautiful street, but right now it's patching and uneven, and the sidewalk should be a concrete, but they put tar, so it's uneven, and then people cannot walk on the sidewalk, and it's trip hazard. So, so could you give an update? Are they going to continue to go to our city attorney, continue to send a demand letter to them?
So we're working with the city attorney in addressing getting those sidewalks and streets repaired with Frontier. I don't have the total list of streets. That was just one example. So that was one of many. But we are working with them, and we are not going to allow them to leave our streets or sidewalks like that anymore, so.
And do we have our engineer, okay, to survey all these streets and to show them the demand of what street this and that? When I walk on the street, there's a lot, a lot of street, and people cannot walk on the sidewalk at all.
Yeah, so what we're working with is we're looking at all of the permits that were issued for Frontier's project, and reviewing and seeing which streets need what improvements or sidewalks need what improvements. So our engineering team is working with our city attorney's office.
So basically, TransTech, we send their engineer to survey all the street and to put a wrecker and send to our city attorney and send to Frontier to demand their repair and to make it what they promised, okay? What they damaged, they are going to make it like before, okay? And I think this is something we need to continue to pursue. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question. With the list, is that going to be posted prominently on the website, so that way residents can check to see what streets are being repaired by Frontier?
That's something that we're still, like I mentioned, we're working with the attorney's office and our engineering department to finalize those streets that are being addressed. So maybe once we have that list finalized, we can share it.
So currently, only one street?
No, no, no. That was one example of many.
Okay, so, good. I would think only one street.
No, it's many. But if that could be placed prominently on the website, so residents can see where the repairs are, that would be great.
Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything? No? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Vialdo in a second by Mayor Protim Tabatzbi to approve our consent calendar, items one through nine. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Vialdo?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatzbi?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Items pass 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to public hearings. This is item number 10. This matter set for, public hearing is for the setting of assessment rates for West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts number four, six, and seven. Will the clerk verify the proper legal notices have been given?
Proper legal notice was given, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Landscape Maintenance District number four, six, and seven, fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Will there be a presentation?
Yes, that would be me. Do you have a presentation? Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So before you tonight is a public hearing for LMD four, six, and seven. This is the annual public hearing to set the assessments for these districts. As you can see in the table above, four, six, and seven are, we're proposing to keep the same assessment rates as last year, so there's no change. Assessment rates for LMD four would remain at $4.38 and two cents, and up to $464 per benefit zone. LMD six would be $650, LMD seven would be $139.22, and all the way up to $464.06. So there's no proposed change in those assessment rates. So one of the things that we had discussed at the last meeting is part of this year's, oh, sorry, six. Six. Yeah. At the last council meeting is tonight, you are, we were requesting that you adopt these assessment rates, or the resolutions to adopt these assessment rates that will be placed on the property tax roll. Part of that, we have included capital improvement budgets for the LMDs. For LMD four, it's $250. For the CIP budget, LMD six is $100,000, and $100,000 for LMD seven as well. One thing that we were planning on bringing before you tonight, but we moved to the August meeting, is a revised scope of services for the landscaping. Right now, it's three feet from the sidewalk and three feet from the property, and everything in between does not get addressed. And so we're looking to increase that landscape maintenance for the entire, to include the entire hillside, and not only bring it down to, up to four feet, but also maintain it moving forward. So that's one of the things that we are looking to do. We're also, this year, we will be addressing the trees in those districts, so we're looking to do a request for proposals for tree trimming cycle in those areas. Obviously, that would then impact, or potentially impact the assessment rates for next year. But this year, we anticipated that we can continue the assessment rates and increase that scope of service for the landscaping contract. We're also going to be putting together a list of projects for the capital improvements for each of the districts, and we're going to be putting that on that website that we shared last time, and so that residents will be able to be aware of what kind of capital improvement, where that money's going and how it's being spent. Also, the new standard of landscaping services for those districts. It is going to be different depending on what the council approves, but the recommendation that that staff is going to be making is to, to increase the scope, so it's going to change, and so we're going to make sure that the residents in those districts are aware of what those changes will entail. And so that's hopefully one of the ways that we can communicate and share with residents in the LMDs, what's going on is through that website and through social media. But if you can go to the next one, Slide 7. So that's a little preview of the anticipated change in scope. Obviously, you know, the first time that you go and trim it down, it's going to look a little bare, but it's, we're hoping it's, the intent is to get it up to four feet, and then if necessary, plant ground cover in areas that it's bare, you know? So we don't want to leave it just brown dirt, but we also want to be cautious of if there's irrigation there or not, and plants that would be able to survive in those areas. And I think that's it for me tonight. So right now, the item before you is the LMDs four, six, and seven.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Contos?
Would there be a way that you could describe the geographic areas, just generally, of where are four, six, and seven, just for, for public consumption?
Yes, let me pull it up, so I can. It's also available, like I mentioned, on our website, so if you're not sure which district you're in, or what, you know, if you see something, you're driving down and you don't know if it's in district one or two.
Yeah, I think I can quickly answer. I, you did a research for you. And the district, okay, the district four, there's a Shadow Oak area, okay, so Paseo and all this walkway. And, okay, on the district six is Hillside East, and they basically pay $650 a year. And then Hillside West is a district seven. So this is, you know Hillside, right? You go to Citrus, you Citrus, you go east, that is the district six. And you go west, there's a newer development, it's district seven. And you go to district four, and basically they pay $348.2, that would be Shadow Oak area. So it's.
And all, all the way up to Zuzet.
Correct. The PKK South.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So is Gingrich Park a part of district seven?
I think the closest would be four.
Yeah, four.
Okay, so the reason why I was asking is because, just to make public here, I've asked the city manager to include onto the list the Gingrich Park and the renovations to the basketball court and other park renovations there. So if you can, please, especially because residents have been asking, particularly keep the public posted about the status of where that is on the capital improvement list. That would be really appreciated.
So if I can clarify, Councilman Contos, it's in district one, and that was, so district one and two were formed a different act, and so we, we're limited as to the type of projects that we could fund with those monies. Senator Susan Rubio was able to get us a legislation to expand those types of monies, and so we're verifying that we can in fact use them for parks. It looks like we are going to be able to, but we're just confirming before we do. But if it isn't, we'll definitely be addressing Greenwich Park with.
Thank you very much.
Want to follow up, okay? And because the demographic, can we try to using the same CDBG fund, okay, to apply something like a Friendship Park? Friendship Park, we spent a million dollars with the CDBG fund grant. So Greenwich, I think possible, we can apply the CDBG grant for the, basically, demographic of the neighborhood, and that, that part need help.
We could definitely double check, but I believe the only park that qualifies for CDBG funding is Friendship. We'll double check, though.
Any other questions? Okay. So now we can open it to the public.
Forgot to mention, Choney with Wildan, our consultant that prepared the engineer's report is also here. If you have any questions for them?
Yeah, let's have, let's open it up to the public. First of all, do we have any written protests, objections, or comments concerning the living of the collection of assessments within the West Covina Landscape Maintenance Districts?
No, Mayor.
Okay. No written comment? Okay, what about, is there anyone present that wants to?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
No speakers, okay. Then we can go ahead and close the public comments, and we'll just have a motion.
No, then I want to have a question.
You have, okay.
Okay, on the district four, okay, basically, currently, we collect $348.2. Would you please come up? Okay? And so, right now, we propose the $250,000 of clean up, that basically the proposed, right? Proposal for what you see, because the Shadow Oak areas, okay, and, okay, with the hill, okay, all this hillside and between the property, and with the Paseo, and with the light, that is massive of obsolete for a long, long time. And the previous council clicked, came down to the row, but now we see a lot of issue, the potential fire hazard. So, so is that quarter million dollars enough? And plus, okay, the first question, how many household, okay, and per districts? For example, district four, so if we see how many units, 1,000 unit times $348, and plus some commercial this and that, so roughly, that is our budget for the trust account. So if we collect this yearly, then accumulate, then we should have enough money to do some cure. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. There's approximately 3,230 parcels, and that includes commercial properties as well.
3,000?
3,230 parcels. And that includes commercial properties as well. As far as the maintenance, if it's, if it's enough to cover it, it just depends on what, what, what the services, what the, what the city has right now.
So this is on the district four, right? So, so we basically collect, if you have 3,200 unit times 348, so we basically collect, am I right?
No, there, there are different rates for each zone. So it varies, goes from $266 up to $1,500. It just depends on what, where you're at.
So roughly, we should collect around a million dollars?
I'm so sorry, $449.16 up to 464. My apologies. So every zone has a different rate. So it goes anywhere from 200. So, it goes anywhere from 200, I'm sorry, 22,000 up to 123,000. Every zone varies.
So, do you have roughly number, how much we collect, the district four or district six or district seven?
Yes, I do. So, roughly, we'll collect 1.1 million for district four.
Annually?
Uh huh. That is correct. And rates don't change, so that will stay constant unless there's parcel changes.
Okay.
And for district six, we'll collect 154,700.
So, district four is 1 point some million dollars?
Correct.
1 point, how many, 1 point?
1.1.
1.1 million. And the district six?
154,000. And that one only has 200, 154,000.
So, they have a less unit.
Correct. They only have 238 units.
How many?
238.
Oh, that's.
So, a very small.
No wonder they pay a lot of money. Pay 650 dollars because they have a big, they have a big hill in the back.
Exactly.
Oh, that is scary hill. So, no wonder they pay much, they almost doubled than the shadow oak.
Because there's less, less properties there.
So, how much, how much, like hundred thousand dollars a year?
150, I'm sorry, 650 dollars a year.
600,000 dollars a year.
650 dollars a year for each rate, for the rate. And the assessment is 154,000.
Got it. Okay, and the district seven?
We collect 173,000.
How much totally?
173,000.
Only 170?
380 parcels are within there.
So, 170?
173,000.
Okay, so, so the district four is 1.1 million, okay, and district six is 650. And then, district seven is 173, okay. So, but basically yearly, we will collect this and to do their maintenance in the tree and, okay, common area.
That's correct.
Yeah, so especially, they have a lot of hill. So, so then, we go back to, based on what we collect, do we have a content, like how much we spend, okay, and who we hires? For example, do we have a quarterly to clean some of the hillside?
I'm so sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I have to go.
Got it. So, you might be, have to research to see how we, we collect the money and how we spend the money.
So, we collect the money on the property tax bill. So, that comes twice a year.
Yeah, like HOA fee, okay.
No, it's different than HOA fee. This is on your property tax.
I know, I know. Because when you own the, okay, HOA, okay, okay, they, you, they collect monthly fee, okay? When, when we have a district, we doing the similar, but we collect through the property tax.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so property tax, we collect one time for the whole year. And this money will go to the, okay, and our trust account. So, this money should go to only for this district.
That's correct.
Yep. So, and we know this district, we try to make a correction to make sure, how to make sure, the first thing, the concern would be the fire hazard with overgrown tree, okay, overgrown vegetation and a lot of dead trees. So, hopefully, we can, once for all, we can, this time, we can clean up all this area. Make, make sense? Okay, and, and then, so this proposal for year, fiscal year 23, 24, we're going to spend 250,000 dollars on some clean up for the district four and hundred thousand dollar each for district, okay, six and seven. And basically, it's clean the hillside, right? Am I right?
There's hillside as well as, there's lighting, lighting as well.
That would be, only lighting we have in question, that would be district four. All the patio have, have a light that a lot is not working. So, we maybe, we need to, we need to put the LED light to replace those light so people can walk safely. Right, so this 250,000 dollars.
So, yeah, we're looking at the pasos and the concrete work, because I know there's some uneven stuff, so, and the dog stations and the hillside maintenance that, you know, has been deferred for many years. So, we do want to address that. We're hoping that a lot of that hillside maintenance that has been deferred can be addressed through the new landscaping contract and then use those monies for, like I said, the pasos and other things.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
So, so basically, we want to make sure, like, before we quarterly on the hillside, we were clean, clear that, okay, the vegetation very close to people's home. Because on the hillside, you can see in the back, that is massive hill with vegetation.
Are you referring to the vegetation or the trees or both?
Oh, vegetation, basically behind people's property on the hill. If you go to the hillside, you go to the high line, you go to the holiday and basically all those property in behind is the huge hill. And that hill basically with a lot of vegetation. And they told me, normally, every three, four months, they, somebody would come to clear it, to make sure that the fire hazard issue, I think, we need to continue using what they pay. And the, and the money for the quarter million dollars is for the south side, the shadow oak, to make sure the patio, okay, with the lighting and clean up with all those overgrown vegetation. And plus, the hillside, their hill, there's a lot of trees growing to their home. So, when we approve this, we are going to have a budget to starting clear up all those issue.
So, yeah, so this budget before you, the assessment includes a budget for those capital improvement projects. And so, I don't know if we included that in previous years. We acknowledge that there's been a lot of deferred maintenance and we're trying to address it in this year's assessment.
And can you, when we approve, can you provide who is the contractor, who is responsible, okay, to do all those supervision? Okay, and then, we can see the money really spent in the right place? And then, we have all this issue can be addressed. So, so in that way, other than that, if we don't have a contract supervision, then what have they performed on now, we have no idea. So, I think this is important to, while we spend, we want to see the result. We don't want to, we approve the money and then, basically, okay, or the policy, but we don't see the improvement. Because those area is really overgrown. And especially, a lot of dead tree and the less deer over there, hopefully, I've been saying, no long time, that can be addressed and removed, no matter, we have to find a, because this is a fire hazard. Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Contos.
I was just wondering, excuse me, I was just wondering about the, what was our process for seeking input from the community regarding what they wanted to see in terms of capital improvement projects? I know we have our hearing today, but what communication was sent out to the residents in these districts for them to provide input in, with regard to what they, what they want?
As far as the district was formed, that was done many, many years ago during a protest ballot. As far as any, any capital improvement projects, I'm not sure how that, how that goes, if there's, if that's put out to the public or not. I would assume that it is on that webs, on the website that was given last, at the last meeting.
So, Councilmember Contos, if I may, the intent is to come up with a list from our maintenance staff to see what's needed out there. And then, definitely convey that to the residents to let them know how the, those monies are being spent and what capital improvement projects are going to be included in this year's CIP. So, we will definitely be relaying that information to those residents in, in those districts.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
I just know that most of the residents, the complaint that emails we get is, get those lights to work and cut those trees and take care, beautify it. That's, that's the issues that we constantly get. Well, yeah, clean it. But in regards to maintenance, the trees and the lighting, since they are paying for that, they want to make sure, the primary thing is to get those, money that they're spending is what they're seeing. So, that's the key element here.
Any other questions?
Okay, and I want to move the motion to approve. And so, hopefully, okay, we can continue to make this thing kind of clean it up, what we, okay, kind of obsolete before. And then, hopefully, with this, okay, we are address all this issue, including the later on couple of the agenda and including the citywide. So, so hopefully, we can clear up. So, move the motion to approve.
Okay, so I need three separate motions. I need one for four, six, and seven.
So, maybe.
I can jump in if you would like, Mayor.
May I please have a motion to adopt resolution 2023-40, confirming the engineer's report and assessments contained in the report for landscape maintenance district four?
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilman Contos, a second by Councilman Wu. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
I have a, may I please, our motion is in order to adopt resolution 2023-41, confirming the engineer's report and the assessments contained in the report for landscape maintenance district number six.
So, move. Second.
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 Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Conto, a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Contos. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
A motion is needed to adopt resolution 2023-42, confirming the engineer's report and the assessments contained in the report for landscape maintenance district number seven.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protem Tabatabai. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
All, all three resos past five zero, Mayor.
Okay, good. Now, we'll move on to item number 11, which is another public hearing. This matter set for public hearing is for authorizing the collection of the annual sewer service charge through the county tax bill. Will the city clerk verify that legal notices have been given?
Proper legal notice was given, Mayor.
At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Sewer Service Charge. This, there will be a first, we need our, we need our presentation. We'll do that.
I will do the presentation. Braxton, if you could just put the first page up again from the PowerPoint. So, for the citywide sewer assessment district, we're also proposing to keep it at the same assessment rate as last year at 82 point, 82 dollars and two cents. We are looking to include some new capital improvement projects. The South Side CIPP lining that you actually approved earlier this evening for 3.5 million dollars and the South Side Sewer Main Replacement at 2.5 million dollars. And so, that's why our capital, our CIP budget for this year for the sewer is 6 million dollars. And so, I don't know if there's any questions. And Will Dan is also here to answer any follow-up questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Nope, okay. So, we'll move on to opening up to the public.
Madam Mayor, I have no written communication, but we do have one public speaker who wishes to speak on the item.
Okay.
Mr. Grivich.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to speak to the document. That's why I was waiting for you to pass it. I provided each of you a doc, a document here with three pages. And the reason I'm here is essentially to ask a question, I, because I didn't understand what was happening here on the sewer projects. When you adopted the budget, which was only a few weeks ago, there was essentially only one sewer project listed in the budget for 153,000. And now, all of a sudden, there's 6 million dollars worth of projects listed. And it said that they're all in progress. I, I don't know how you could have 6 million dollars worth of projects, was it 12 projects in progress when you didn't even have it in the budget a few weeks ago. So, that, it just doesn't make much sense to me, how you could have started all this with no money. So, that's, that's, that's it. That's my question.
No further speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Can you answer the question?
Yes. So, when we're preparing the budget that was presented to you and we're preparing this, there was some discrepancies because they were, the timing was off a little bit, but it is included for fiscal year 2024, the CIP lining project that was part of what was approved earlier this evening. So, that was budgeted for this fiscal year. So, I don't know if that helps clarify the question. No, I don't know if Stephanie has, can help answer this.
Do you need this?
Yes. So, a lot of what we're still working on is from the prior years in the budget. So, at each year, those roll over. So, while the new amounts that we're doing is only 152,000 that we've added to one of them, that was to true it up to get to where they needed to be, that project. But a lot of the other projects are simply moving on and rolling over. So, that CIP lining that you approved earlier, if you'll look, there's a project that's 3.5 million from prior years. We hadn't actually moved forward on it, now we have. So, that's where that's coming from.
So, question. So, basically, previously, do we budget all this?
Correct. You budget those in prior years and then you roll those over after the fiscal year's done. Because we've already done some design in there and some bidding expenses, but we obviously hadn't done construction yet. So, that will be done in this fiscal year.
So, when we budget, so we, that money we save already, am I right?
Correct. It's coming from the fund balance.
The budget, so we didn't use it yet because we still in the design phase. And now, we ready to go. So, we're going to spend those money that we previously we budget.
Correct. Correct. Now, Acting City Manager was correct in that there were some discrepancies in like the amounts per project that we're fine tuning with this process.
Correct.
And that will be adjusted throughout the process. Correct. But as you can see, we've, we've been investing about 12.4 million into the sewer, sewer fund. It's just these projects take years to actually.
It take time to design and approve and go, look how long we wait for contractor to start in doing the, okay, traffic.
This is a sewer lift station that's been going on for a couple of years.
Yeah, can you believe it? Okay, like taking forever. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay.
Okay, and so, so basically.
So, we could close the.
No, it's council discussion.
They still the.
Oh, yeah, we'll close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
We're closing the hearing. And now, we can have council discussion.
So, did you propose increase or no, right? So, everything the same?
Correct. It's the same assessment rate. We're just.
Same assessment rate. Okay, move the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Contos to approve resolution 2023-69. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes five zero, Mayor.
Okay, great. Yes, we're moving along. Moving along. Item number 12. This matter set for the public hearing is for the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notices have been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I want to find out if we received any written comments or.
We have not. Is there a staff report?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Okay, let's have a staff report.
It's the same presentation.
Thank you.
So, the, we, this is the only district this evening that we are proposing an increase. It's by the allowed 2% CPI. So, it is increasing it from 57 dollars and 68 cents to 58 dollars and 85 cents. So, it's the only district, like I mentioned, that we are increasing the assessment rate. That's it for me this evening.
Okay, any questions? Okay, now, I'm going to open it up to public hearing.
I've received no comments, Mayor, and I have no speaker slips on this item.
So, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, city council.
So, when you talk about citywide lighting and maintenance, that is besides those district one, two, four, six, seven, and, right?
This is the entire city.
Entire city, besides those district. So, those district won't get charged again. This is only for, okay, us, that we in the district.
I would double check, but I think of it citywide. I'll have Shoney respond to that.[1789.34]
These are for Citywide Lighting and Landscaping Areas, so the, those probably also do pay for these Citywide.
Or is it entire city, everybody have to pay?
Correct.
So, so basically, annually, on their tax bill, they paying fifty-eight dollars, and then now you propose one dollar increase, one dollar two percent?
That's correct.
Okay, for the, for the entire city. And that cover lighting and maintenance, what kind of service can you just share with us?
Sure. It's the lighting and landscaping for all of, for the whole entire city. So that includes, includes but not limited to trees, irrigation systems, hardscape, sidewalk maintenance, resulting from landscape growth, facilities such as lighting poles, fixtures, bulbs, conduits, for the entire city.
So the street light, that's including this. So the power bill we have to pay to Edison, that's including this?
That's correct.
This, okay, Citywide?
That's correct.
And the median, the street, the tree well, okay?
For all public areas.
Including this. So this is the money we collect on our tax bill, public tax, and then we hire the contractor, okay, for doing the median street, okay, and, and including the lighting, the street traffic light too, right?
Let me double check.
Traffic lights, street light.
Let me double check.
We have a lot of street lights, all this, okay? And the street lights LED now?
Some of them are, I believe, yeah.
Most of them are LED, right? So they can save more power. Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind, one of the main, one of the main expenses from the Citywide LMD is the tree trimming type.
Tree trimming. And it's current, yes, because South Coast Everet, okay, is our contractor doing the cycles, when it's five years, right?
Correct. It's a five-year tree trimming.
So basically, and the entire city, all this tree on the sidewalk, that belong to this, okay, Citywide, and there's money we collect on our tax, public tax, and then we'll provide all this service. So, and the current is five-year cycle?
Correct.
And as I remember, we have a hearing with West Coast Everest, and they're talking about they identify each of the tree and when to trim. And, and I remember they will give us the website so people can identify their tree in front of their home, okay, or area that tree will be, when will be trimmed or when they have been trimmed. Am I right?
We will. If you wait until the next council meeting, we'll have some good news on that regard.
See, suspension, suspense, suspense, suspense. This is like a soap opera.
Slip hanger.
Stay tuned, yes.
I hope it's a good show.
Till next time.
We have the drama, we have yelling, we have screaming, okay? And we have good news, okay? So, so stay tuned, okay? Yeah, okay. Good things coming. Okay, so anyway, so got it. So then basically, this is something that'd be enough to cover our maintenance for entire outer, our street and our city. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kontos?
Just for clarification, would this also include the cost for putting in the new lighting in the parks that we've been asking for? Or is that a separate line item? And the second question is with regard to, just looking at it ahead of time, to the lighting on the median for, for the holiday lights, it doesn't go all the way up. I'm told that it just goes partially. So I've asked that that be looked at. So is that part of it? Would that be part of this too? Or is that also a separate line item? Right, the Cameron Park and other places to light the baseball fields and such? If that's, if this is included, if, if the, if what we're approving tonight also covers that, or is that separate?
Yeah, we have a sixteen park. So I doubt it though.
Are you talking about like the field lighting or...
The field lighting, yeah.
I don't believe this would, the district wouldn't cover the field lighting, no.
Okay.
About security light, that you walk into the park, all those light, including the Citywide in the park?
It includes all the streets along the street. It's not usually within public areas.
Okay, so the street lighting.
So parks, who pay for, what, where's the money from the park fund?
It depends on the type of improvement. If it's ongoing like a light pole in a park opposed to like a big project like the one that we're doing at Cortez. The Cortez one is a capital improvement project that council identified and we've, you know, programmed into the capital improvement project. Sorry?
No, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Or if it's a light in a park that went out, then that could be replaced, you know, as needed.
So for example, the children playground, the Friendship Park, or Greenwich Park, okay, someday needs security light, okay, so, okay, and that will be belong to a budget? What, what, what is the funding source?
We are actually working towards, as a capital improvement project, the Friendship Park lighting issue and a bathroom, and as well as, I think there's a snack bar that needs improvements or replacement or, needs to be addressed. So that is a capital improvement project that we're moving toward.
Does that come from our general fund, our restricted fund, or our major A fund or something?
I believe Friendship Park is the park that we can use a CDB, a capital, a Community Development Block grant funds or CDBG.
So we can still use CDBG to install the light that is on the children playground is very dark? And I think Greenwich Park, same thing, same issue too, and then some other park, okay, all have that issue.
So Greenwich Park, like I mentioned earlier, we're verifying that we can use the LMD funds for that because it's in that LMD one, that we've expanded use of those monies. If we can, we'll be moving forward with that.
And, okay, Councilman Konto, can I follow your request on, so I can say something?
Please.
Okay, thank you so much, okay? I don't want to interrupt your, okay, question. Okay, I think I want to follow, okay, Councilman Konto, we got in the park, okay, and we have a sixteen park, and again, the maintenance, and we, now we talk about Citywide's maintenance and the lighting, and then we charged fifty-eight dollars so we can take care of entire city. But how about people really criticize our, well cap our parks? And how can we make this park, okay, and where this funding coming from? And how can we make sure those park is presentable and light, with light and safe and, and it's clean? So where's the budget coming from?
It's not coming from the L, Citywide LMD.
Not, okay. So where this sixteen park budget coming from?
For landscaping, I believe it's the general fund.
So for our general fund, we need to output, okay? So we want to make sure our money is spent in the right place because outside of our park is really not presentable. Okay, and there's some splash, splash pad, okay, on the, yeah, the naughty park. So can we, can we get this thing, summer is coming and going?
Summer's here.
I know. Summer, sorry, summer is going away. It's so hot. Okay, so, so we didn't want to make sure the children, I know we have kids, okay, a cool kid, okay? It's no, it's different than the, you have a splash, splash pad in the park and they can use all the time. So hopefully, we, in no time, we can get this, sorry, we can out, outside the park yet. I know, I know, I know, I know.
We're having fun here.
I know, I know, I'm carrying away, okay? I want to move the motion to approve.
Oh, Mayor Protim?
Before, before the motion.
Before we move the motion.
Just to be clear, ten percent, two percent is, is the cap. Doesn't necessarily mean that's the level of rate we should be increasing it by.
Correct. So the allowable is two percent. It's either two percent or CPI, whichever is lower. Unfortunately, CPI is three point, I believe, six, seven right now, so we have to do two percent.
Right. So the reality is it still may not be enough funding.
A few years back, we actually went out to ballot. I think, I think we tried to raise it about, I believe it was twenty percent, no, don't quote, maybe it was twenty percent. And unfortunately, that didn't pass, but there is a need for, to increase this.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it just, I think, you know, in full transparency, so it's all the residents understand, you know, current, current rate is, is too low to meet the need. You know, so we're raising it the max two percent, but no, no one should be under the impression that it's enough funding to provide the level of service that we need. And so this is something, I think, as a community, we, we need to think about, you know, what level we're, we're comfortable paying to eventually bring the city to the standard. Thank you.
Okay, I agree, okay, okay, but beside that, we want to see the performance. We want to see our contractor doing their job, okay? And, but I agree, I think possible, okay, fifty-eight dollars and for entire city, possible a little bit, okay? And, but how we persuade our resident, but I think the issue is performance first, okay? It's a chicken and egg. If our performance not there, and then we want to tell the residents, say, hey, okay, and we want to raise your rate, but at the same time, you raise the rate, we still don't perform. It happen all the time. So hopefully, we, I think we should show, okay, and we clean up the city at the same time, we say, hey, we want to keep this city beautiful, and we might have to, okay, increase. Make, make sense to you? And in that way, it's much, much more persuasive rather than just request, raise the, hike the rate, okay? But so, so anyway, and right now, we cannot do anything, right now, we only can go to two percent. But maybe in the future, we can put on ballot, okay? And, but again, we, we need to perform, our contractor need to do the right thing, okay? That somebody supervise then, make sure, okay? Right now, okay, our contractor maybe have issue, so we want to make sure that can be addressed. So anyway, I move the motion already.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protim Tabatabai to adopt Resolution 2023-44. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes five zero.
Yes. Moving on to item number thirteen, public hearing. This, this is the time to set for the public hearing of the city council to consider the approval of a resolution that levies the assessment for West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District area for fiscal year 2023-2024. Notice of this hearing has been published as required by the California state law. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notices have been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, mayor.
Okay. At this time, I shall open the public hearing regarding the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District 2023-2024 levy of assessments. First, there'll be a presentation.
Good evening, mayor. It'll be Gerardo Rojas from Community Development providing the presentation.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. The item on the agenda tonight is a resolution seeking to confirm the annual report filed by the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District and levy an annual assessment that will be placed on LA County tax roll for the coming fiscal year. The Auto Plaza is comprised of seven dealerships. It was originally created for the reader board sign and the shared marketing on it for the different dealerships. Since that time, the sign has been replaced and upgraded to an LED sign. Part of the assessment that you will vote on tonight will go towards the repayment of the loan as well as insurance, landscape maintenance, electricity, and other costs. This is a district map of the different benefit zones and includes Envision Toyota of West Covina, Norm Reeves Honda, Tesla of West Covina, Performance Ford, Envision Mercedes-Benz of West Covina, Envision Audi of West Covina.
Excuse me. Can we take the conversation outside, please?
And lastly, the former drive-time site. In order to place the assessment, a series of benchmarks have to occur. First, the Auto Plaza Advisory Board met on June 7, 2023, where they recommended the budget and voted to approve the annual report for fiscal year 2324. On June 20, 2023, the city council approved the resolution of intention to levy assessments for the Auto Plaza BID and set the date and time for the public hearing for this evening. Tonight, we are proposing the annual report, which you can confirm and levy the assessments as part of the resolution. The annual report includes a total budget for fiscal year 2324 of one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and forty cents. It includes the repayment of the city loan for the LED sign and a six-month, excuse me, six-month operating reserve required pursuant to the loan agreement with the city. As the BID has surplus funds from last year, they have voted to utilize a portion of the surplus for the annual operating expenditures. As such, an assessment of sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars will be applied per dealership site. The assessment will go towards annual expenses, including the cost of maintenance, electricity, programming, loan repayment, and insurance for the reader board, as well as landscape maintenance for the, the Auto Plaza. The loan is repaid to the city in two annual payments of twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents. That concludes the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Council members, do you have any questions for the staff?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
On the exhibit A, number four, it's not Performance Ford, that's replaced with the Tesla, right? I mean, all the dealerships there?
The assessment four is Performance Ford. The neighboring assessment three is Tesla.
Oh, okay, the former, okay, got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, I shall open the public hearing regarding the West Covina Auto Plaza Improvement District 2023-2024 levy of assessment. Do we have any written comments?
I have received no comments, and we have no speaker slips, mayor.
Okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions?
Okay. Before I move the motion to approve, a quick question is that, is that the big readers board fixed yet?
It's back and functioning this morning.
Functioning now, okay, yeah. Okay, good. So everything's good. I move the motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Kontos to approve Resolution 2023-47, confirming the annual report for the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District area for fiscal year 2023-24. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Before I say, yes, okay, aye. And so Tesla is including on this BID, right?
Tesla will be included, yes.
Will be already included.
Sorry, yeah. So Tesla is included. So within the district, there are seven benefit zones, so each benefit zone will be assessed at sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty, or fifty-two dollars, and they each pay the same portion.
So basically, Tesla is including a BID due to they in the same zone, so they must be in the board.
They're in this, in the business improvement district.
Okay. And so my answer is aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, mayor.
Okay. Well, I think we're done with the agenda. Now we're going to move on to any city council requests, comments? Okay? Comment?
Go back to the community service with all the staff. I just want to show my respect, okay, to magnificent July Fourth celebration. I think this is something extremely organized and with the police and the fire and the staff, and everybody work together, and it's not only it's very safe, and we got thousands, I want to say again, tens of thousands of people, okay? And very happy and attend this celebration, National Day, Independence Celebration, okay? And you see nothing but brotherhood and sisterhood, okay? It's a neighbor and family together, okay, enjoying a day, and the children playground well-designed and, and well-attended with all these happy people, and, and I think it shows the unity, okay? We all the same American in this city, in this country, we're very proud, okay? And no matter how people, okay, criticize and this, and it's, it's okay, it's a freedom of speech, but, but that's how our job is, put our people, residents together, but that is how achieved by our staff, and they work very hard. I want to thanks, okay, Acting City Manager, okay, but especially for our, okay, Assistant City Managers, and Vanessa, Miguel, Steve, and all these people, I cannot name their name, sorry about that, but they did a magnificent job. They, they running around, try to keep everybody happy, and then, and our police and fire try to keep everybody safe. And we are very proud to have this sport plaques, to have this facility compared with 2018, that time still run by the big league dream, so we only can use a tiny little portion. And totally different than right now, when now we use entire field, okay, entire area, so we can, the people spread around and enjoying a magnificent time, and very proud of the city. But thank you so much, staff, thank you for your hard, okay, work and put this in together. And nevertheless, okay, tomorrow night, okay, don't forget, six o'clock, okay, our summer concert, okay, it's Stone Soul coming, okay, they're very, very popular, okay? So if you are ready to dance, I'm going to see you to dance floor, okay? Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I wanted to share the same sentiments, you know, for those who were at the fireworks in two thousand and eighteen, you can see how much it was well-loved again. The traffic of flow was well-organized, we did like and see that the Uber drop-off, the Lyft, just the flow of traffic, everything just, it flowed. I know the long lines of the food, that was the only thing, everybody's hungry, but then again, you know, towards the evening, just an influx of people just came in, and that just showed, you know, how many people in attendance wanted to see the fireworks. And I just want to make sure, you know, I know we push for the fireworks because the community wants it. We say no fireworks, so we need to give them alternative, and having this as an alternative just made it all better. And, and so I know the community appreciate, they love the fireworks show, and we hope to see this as a yearly tradition in our city, and more food, because the vendors, they were hungry, but the food was delicious, everything was great, and everyone did a fabulous job in keeping everyone safe. So thank you, and we hope everybody had a wonderful Fourth of July. Just want to say, wonderful job, thank you.
Councilman Cantos?
Thank you so much. I really would like to just share, coming up in a, on a different topic, that I'm going to be supporting kids from West Covina Unified School District and Covina Valley Unified School District who are, we're working to get school supplies and everything for them for the fall. And so if anyone in the public is interested in working with us on this, please email me at ole.cantos@westcovina.org. And also, on a separate front, congratulations to our West Covina Little League American baseball teams. Our divisions moved forward to sectionals, they did a magnificent job. The reason why I have no voice today is because last night I was cheering for the twelve-year-olds who won, who won two to one, and I was yelling so loud for the entire game, I lost my voice. So I just love our sports, our youth sports teams and our, all of our sports teams, and we just have to keep coming together, and it's just a wonderful city. We just keep having more fun together and making a big difference in each other's lives. So just love West Covina, and thank you all for just being such active community participants. It's a magnificent city, and we're just going to keep it up.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to build on tonight's theme, I think tonight in public comment, we saw the impact that our community senior service staff has by seeing people. And I think, again, you know, oftentimes, segments of our community are ignored, and when we see them, it has such huge impact, not, not just on them, but as, as we saw the staff that works with them. And so I think the work that we are doing in this city to bring everyone together, I think is, we're really seeing the fruits, and people are not only appreciative, but it's what we should be doing, and I am so proud that we are doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I have to say, Fourth of July, the Fourth of July event was beautiful. I was happy to see the happy faces, the food ran out, we had so many people there. I was especially happy that we had all five council members, finally, all of us together celebrating the independence of our country. And I just want to thank our staff, it wouldn't be able to happen without them, and, and the people of West Covina, thank you for supporting us. And like Councilwoman Lopez Viado says, we have to continue this, we have to continue having these events on a yearly basis, and it just brings us together. And all we want to do here is have a positive influence on our children and on the rest of the community. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.
Really quick, information, information.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, just Acting City Manager come over here, hey, don't forget to tell people, okay, tomorrow is the last second of our summer concert. So, so that was the Stone, so you want, you want to say it?
Wait, wait, what?
Assistant City Manager, you want to carry on to tell everybody, show up for next week, okay? And so, and the next Wednesday?
Absolutely.
Who is the band, I think it's a hit, okay, will be, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, if I may, just to acknowledge what Councilman Wu said, tomorrow is our second to the last summer concert. Tomorrow's concert will feature Stone Soul, which will be playing some of the favorite Motown hits, so we are looking forward to that. We did get several requests, if you will, or recommendations from the community for that particular band. So we're excited to gather with the community and to celebrate as one West Covina, so thank you.
Next Wednesday?
The following Wednesday will be our last summer concert, and it is actually a menor tribute band, so we, another one we're really looking forward to. We are, our goal is to end this year's season on a high note, and I think that the community will be very pleased and impressed. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Sorry, you mentioned last band. I know Film at West Covina is having their student film festival on Friday, August eighteenth, I believe, and come support all the student bands, you know, these are potential future of, you know, performers, artists, and everybody out there, and, you know, we do have the guest speaker from Stranger Things that will be there, who will, we have guest speakers, so we'll be having a few student bands, of course, the student films, and this is the first year we open it up to the San Gabriel Valley, so all the schools locally are able to submit, so come support our students, the students in the local regions, and enjoy entertainment that day as well.
So it's August eighteenth, at what time?
Six o'clock, but I'll make sure to send the fire, so that they can share it with the residents as well.
Okay, I think it's very, it's over here.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, yeah. I think it's very, this is numbered, what, the fourth annual?
Our fifth year.
Fifty years already?
Our fifth, fifth annual.
I think it's get bigger and bigger, very, very popular.
Gets bigger, popular, and, you know, we open it up to the surrounding areas because they all wanted to submit, and, and it's all led by students. So you have student who's emceeing, you have the students, you know, who helps do all this, so there's a lot of areas that these students are growing, not just in a certain field, but it's, they're, you know, promoting their learning, they're, you know, they're filming, they're, they're doing a variety of different things, so it's pretty much students running these student events as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that said, good night, everyone, and have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.